Okay, first off, I want to start the meeting for the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting for Monday, July 13 at 7:02 PM. And first off, I hope everyone is doing well, your friends and family are safe and healthy, and the boredom hasn't set in too much, you're making do, you're moving on, and again, this too shall pass, things will come to a normalcy at some point. But keep your chin up, and we'll move on with the work of the government for the town. Seating of alternates in a rare display of availability, we have all nine regular members. So Doug, though you won't be seated tonight, we'd be happy to have any conversation you wish to share, but we will have our nine full members full complement.
Doug, can I make, okay, talk about the point of order before we go too far?
Please go right ahead.
Okay, if, if we finish our public hearing and we have to do a vote, you would have to be here for both public hearings to give a vote on this.
Okay, so if the, when we do come to the public hearing section, as Alex is reminding us, I believe if I'm right, Jerry, Nord, and Jeff were not at the public hearing the last time around?
Correct.
Was there anyone else who was not at the public hearing that I'm missing? The first half of the public hearing, I should say? Okay, so gentlemen, though we appreciate your input and any questions or anything that you wish to share, we'd be more than happy to hear or answer. If you have questions on anything, however, we ask that you abstain from voting so that we have continuity with our public hearing, considering we had to divide it up into two parts this time. Okay, so we've done through the seating of alternates, review of the minutes of June 8th for a regular meeting and the June 24th special meeting. Any comments on the minutes?
Jeff, I had a couple.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Doug.
On June 8th...
Who was speaking?
That was Doug, Jenny.
On June 8th, it was stated that Mr. Jenny and Mr. Brouch will come up with a definition associated with agricultural waste. I was, I was thinking that really should be, PZZ is recommending the Ashford Agriculture Commission to propose definitions, but we, we did discuss it in the June 24th discussion, so I don't know how, I guess I'd like the minutes to be somewhat complete, and it wasn't necessarily Luther and I coming up with something, per se.
Would you say what page and what paragraph?
It's the first page under public comments, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs down.
Okay.
Yeah, and when I went back and where we didn't receive anything from the Ag Commission, I went back to several online resources of other towns and state websites and came up with a definition that seemed to suit that, and that's what, that's what went into the version that we've got out there. So I think Doug, you know, as you indicated when you reviewed what we had done, it was, it was complete to your satisfaction.
I agree, Dick. I'm merely commenting on the, the to be approved minutes from the 8th, just from a documentation perspective of what the true intent was, and then we subsequently, we have subsequently taken care of it, but it goes back to just in terms of documenting minutes from past meetings.
So your, your request is that the, the statement that identifies you and Luther to simply say that the PC requests of the Ag Commission, as opposed to the two of you coming back with the definition at that point, at June 8th?
That's my request, I think that's prudent, given how we, we are trying to operate across commissions.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll capture that in these minutes in correcting the June, the statements of June 8th, so Valerie will capture that.
We're just going to remove Mr. Jenny and Mr. Brouch?
Well, our statement will simply be that the request of the PZC was not of Mr. Jenny and Mr. Brush, but it was of the P&amp;Z requests of the Ag Commission would be the change, and that's what we'll capture in these minutes.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. We have a full complement of members for the nine, so we didn't seat any alternates, but again, any input you wish to give is great, so thank you.
Okay.
Was there anything else, Doug?
On June 8th, no, I do have some comments on the 24th, but I wasn't sure if you want that now.
If you did the 28th, and any other comments on the 8th or the 24th?
So I have the 24th, then.
Go ahead, Doug.
This is the section titled, "First Discussion Was on Article 3 Definitions: Nuisance", so it's that first paragraph there. It states that Mr. Hestillo said he contacted a lawyer, but I think that should be Mr. Silversmith, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, one last item, the second to last sentence, starting with, "Mr. Silversmith has edited the wording." Halfway in that sentence, it says, "Does not identify nuisance." I, I think in, we really should have it worded along the lines of, "Mr. Smith has edited the wording to include language that captures intent of short-term rentals without using the term nuisance." The intent was to, we're trying to capture the true intent of what Mark and Janet were striving for as in the subcommittee. Open for discussion.
No, that's, that's fine.
You'll have to tell me exactly where that is.
Where was that again, Doug?
The exact, go ahead Valerie, ask your question.
Well, you know, if I don't know where to make the correction, it's in the, under the first discussion, where does it say, "Mr. Smith said something"? I don't even see that. You'll have to tell me what sentence it is.
It's the fifth sentence into that paragraph, it starts with, "Mr. Silversmith."
Okay, so what do you want it to say?
I think the words that say, "Does not identify nuisance," do you see those words?
It just says, "The decision is to remove the word nuisance." Unless, unless Mr. Silversmith changed by minutes, I don't, I don't have that. So as long as you can tell me exactly what to say, I'll correct it. I have, Mr. Silversmith has written out the actual definition, expressing the meaning, and will send it to Mr. Williams for substitution of what is currently written on page nine. That's what I have.
Are you with me? Trying to find him, minutes here.
Doug, I think they were trying to say, or Mr. Chair, not, we're not using the word nuisance, but defining what would be an objection.
If I can recall what was discussed, and we can get to the point of going over them, the Ag Commission did not want the word nuisance used as a definition, nor did it want the word nuisance in the Section 4B. So we agreed to take that word out and substitute the language that was provided by the attorney to Jeff, and Jeff forwarded that to me that evening, and that's what we did in the revisions of the regulations.
Would it be easier if I shared my screen with the file and I could show you electronically what I'm recommending?
Doug, I just want to be clear that in the middle of first discussion, Mr. Silversmith has edited the wording under the Short Term Rental Section Number Four to include language that does not identify nuisance, and will send it to Mr. Williams for substitution of what is currently written on page nine. Is that what you're talking about?
That is correct.
Okay, and Valerie, you say you don't see that?
Well, I must not have copied off, because you must have changed my wording, because I've got, "Mr. Silversmith has written out the actual definition, expressing the meaning, and will send it to Mr. Williams for substitution of what is currently written on page nine. The decision is to remove the word nuisance and actually insert its definition." If you could just send me the corrected thing on email, that would be the easiest thing for me to correct.
That will be fine. We'll send that and then make the, so Doug, what is your recommendation again? I'm just sorry, I just wanted to catch that. What's, what's the wording that you wanted to address?
In place of the three words, "Does not identify nuisance,"
Yeah.
I would like to have, "Captures the intent for short-term rental regulations without using the explicit term, quote, nuisance, end quote."
But that wasn't at the meeting.
Let's see if this works. Oh crap, I was getting to the page, how's that? Can you see my computer screen?
Yes. More importantly, Valerie, can you see his computer screen?
I can.
And that was at, that was at the recommendation of our attorney, so I don't know if he wanted to include that in.
But I don't think all of that was stated at the meeting, or I would have written that down.
It's reflective in the regulations we're going to talk about later in the agenda, so...
I'm, I'm fine with that change in language, if you're feeling that identifying, you know, the identification of the term nuisance and using this is better. Does anyone have any objection to the change?
Other than I think we're into the weeds here.
I agree with you 100%.
I mean, what amounts to the fact is that we agreed to certain things on the 24th, we put those things into the revisions that were sent out to everybody. Doug responded to the group that he was in concurrence with everything with two exceptions. I responded back to him with those two exceptions, which we'll talk about. I think the key thing is, we need to find a way to move forward on this without getting into the weeds.
I don't, I don't, this has nothing to do with the regs or anything, this has to do with what was captured in the minutes on this discussion of this, and Doug just wants us to be accurate in and non-committal in what we're dealing with when we use the word, not giving credence to the term nuisance, since we removed it from our definitions, I think. So again...
I agree with, I agree with the change, I think that reflects that better.
Okay, so Valerie, we'll be sure that Alex copies you on the, the submitted...
I have enough time to write that all down now, so if you could send that to me in an email, I can fix it.
Doug, do you think you could send that to Valerie so she can use your language?
Yes, is, when I send an email to the Ashford group, does it go to her?
I'm not sure.
Yes, it does.
But we'll get that over to you, one way or another, just send it to Alex, and Alex will get it over to her, how's that sound?
Will do.
Okay.
As an aside, responding to the distribution that Alex uses to send to the PZT does not automatically send to everyone unless you're on that same outlook platform, so that doesn't work that way. So it's better to send, better to send to Alex and let Alex send it out to the group.
That's, that's kind of what we suggested, okay, very good. Anything else, Doug?
That is all, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, okay. So we'll get that reflected appropriately, we'll get the information to Valerie, and more importantly, we'll capture those changes in these minutes here to the previous meetings. Thank you. Um, with those changes, um, I'm, I'm going to hold off on a review and acceptance of the minutes until we get the changes put in place and we're able to see them and review them, so we'll review those with the next time around. Now, public comments, and we have a number of folks from the public here joining us, does anyone have any comments? This is again, prior to the public hearing, this is just for our regular meeting, any comments for planning and zoning? Okay, I'll take that as, unless you're on mute and don't realize you're on mute. Okay, we will move on. Bills, Alex, any bills? Where did Alex go? Hang on, I got a text here a second ago. From Alex. Alex's electricity went out, he's out starting the generators, he can get back on. I take it, I don't think he has any bills at this point, but that's okay, we will move on for bills. Correspondents, we have one correspondence to share. And we'll see if I can find it here. This is an email we received from Brian and Lisa Marie Griffiths, and this was on July 1st, 2020. "My wife and I are presently being subject to multiple dump truck night runs," night as in K-N-I-G-H-T, night construction, "runs along with accompanying front-end loader activity, the earth material is being transported to Briar Lake. As a reminder, this is the fourth summer in a row being subjected to excessive environmental noise, and the fifth summer in a row for excessive environmental noise in general. Summer of 2016 activity at 154 Westford Hill was clearing trees, non-excavation and processing. Today is yet another day that would have been nice to have our windows open, but the noise is bothersome, not only to me, but others in the neighborhood. We are requesting an update regarding 154 Westford Hill, please call us or respond to this email with whatever update you can give us at the time." To let the commission know, I have reached out, actually a couple of times, to Ken Slater, I know he is out of office today, however, I did give him an urgent request to give us an update as to the status of the courts. If, just to remind everyone, that's where we were with our stipulated agreement that we had agreed upon and asked Ken to submit to the court. I think the courts are opening up, but they're probably opening up slowly with a backlog docket, but I'm waiting to get some type of confirmation from Ken to see what he can get from the clerk as to what the status is of that. And until we can, until we know that that's been submitted with the court and accept, accepted, I'm hesitant to give off any further information than what's already been given to Mr. Griffiths, including, you know, the fact that we did look into some requirements of the owner of 154 Westford Hill, and those requirements were agreed to, it's just a matter of the court agreeing to our stipulated agreement. So, and I have expressed that back to Mr. Griffiths in the hopes that Ken will be able to get back to me. Any questions? Okay, I'm looking for questions, anyone on mute? No, okay. Um, okay, so now we will adjourn to the continuation of the public hearing on the proposed revisions to Article 3, 4, 5, and 6. Again, just to remind the committee, Articles 5, excuse me, and 6, which included Article 2E, the Section 2 on exemptions, was completed at the last hearing, the last sex, the first part of the hearing that we're in now. Article 5F on fees was also, discussion was completed on that, and Article A, Section 4 Administrative Action, also discussion was completed on that. So we are simply addressing Article 3 Definitions and Article 4B, which are our residential agricultural zone zoning regulations. So I open up the public hearing to anyone on the call wishing to make a statement or discuss or have questions. Alex, welcome back.
Thanks, my computer seems to be going in and out with the internet.
Does anyone on the line have any questions regarding our changes or anything specific to address?
Jeff, this is Doug Jenny, should I bring up the comments that I emailed the commission?
I'd ask you to hold that off for a discussion at the meeting following.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm sorry.
Jeff, if I could, I'd sent out a summary of the changes that we made as a result of this 624 meeting, if I could just kind of recap those, use that as a basis to, to frame the discussion.
Um, yeah, there's something a bit more complete I just wanted to go through, but that's fine, Dick, you can go through that, go right ahead.
Yeah, the, what was sent out to the commission and also posted on the website were the summary of what I saw and as the discussion that we had on the 624. Basically, the first point was nuisance was removed from the definitions, for the nuisance does not appear in any of the revised sections of the regulations. It does, however, remain in several other places of the non-revised portions of the regulations. That's okay, because nuisance is legally defined in a certain way, that it doesn't require a definition within our regulations. So removing it does not really impede those other sections. So basically, it's out of the definitions and it's out of the Section 4B. We replaced the language in Section 4B with the language that was provided by our attorneys, and that's what went out to everyone for the review. Farm-to-table was removed from the list as a specially permitted use, and in its place, eateries on a farm was added, and farm-to-table was also removed from the definitions. We came up, I came up with the definition of eateries that I pulled from other internet sources, and that was added to Article 3. There was a lot of discussion about the issue of unwanted in terms of agricultural waste. We removed the term unwanted from agricultural waste, and then I also went through, point by point, all of the various items that Doug had presented in his review of the definitions, and pretty much put forth all of those. The only one that we didn't put forth was the one sign per location, which we had agreed was something that we would not take out. Doug did point out in a note that he sent out yesterday or today, that he wanted to reference the Public Act.
Can you hold, Richard, could you just hold off on that? Because I'd like that to just be discussion for the commission following the meeting, as opposed to something new for the hearing.
Yeah, so, but basically, everything that was recommended by Doug and the Agriculture Commission, with a few minor exceptions, were pretty much incorporated into what we posted online. So with that, you know, we can move on to discuss any other. The other issue I would reinforce is, other than the Section 4B and Article 3, we had approved everything else with exception of those, so we really only should be discussing 3 and 4B.
Right, and what I just wanted to give those that are attending the hearing who weren't here the last time, is to give them an idea, an overview, thank you for that, Dick, thank you for the specifics on the changes that we've been wrestling with and working with, with our working meetings. But again, regarding the changes to Article 3 of definitions, our intent was to scale back, make it, make the entire document obviously easier for the general public to work with, and that included scaling back of some of the definitions that included lists of items. Wasn't our intent to try and list every instance, every case on that, or including but not limited to, anything like that, we didn't need to include that in the definitions, it started to become part of our regulations, actually, when we started doing that. So that, besides footnoting a number of the Connecticut General statutes and referencing their language, instead of building our own language was the intent also, when it came to the definitions. I mean, I could go through a number of the definitions here that either were changed, added, or removed, but a lot of it's pretty much self-explanatory unless someone has something specific from a definition standpoint that they wanted to discuss. Our definitions, I believe, with the change, as Dick indicated, from nuisance, and not including that in our definitions at this time, so there aren't widespread applications of it. Most of the definitions, again, were more simplified and, and/or moved into the body of the regulations, as opposed to defining it once and defining it again. Any comments from attendees? Following that, I would take comments from the board, if they wanted to share anything. Okay, um, seeing as we are at that point, um, we will move on to Article 4B, the residential agricultural zone and the proposed land use regulations there. And again, the intent of the board overall was to simplify the regs, making them easier for the general public to use, also standardize them a little bit, get them more in, more in line with many of the surrounding towns, as well as those similar in size and rural nature, and what they're using for language, besides, you know, your permitted uses, Section 2, and special permitted uses, Section 3, which has been expanded to include many of the items that were in a table format. The general standards themselves have been changed to include a true definition of minimal lot size, as well as minimal buildable area, which were kind of blended together previously. lot size, as well as minimal buildable area, which were kind of blended together previously in our definition. Another thing that you'll see changing is a removal of a number of the requirements when it came to wetlands and groundwater, and again, a few of the bedrock, things like this, most all of which are covered by a A-2 site plan that is a requirement when coming to and presenting for development. We don't have, we don't regulate wetlands, but wetlands wouldn't be in review if wetlands were included in a site plan. You know, as someone mentioned to me, for bedrock and such, dynamite's a wonderful thing, and it's been invented, and it's been around for a long time. So the need to remove bedrock should not limit someone's ability to build. The other thing is, is that with these square footage requirements, what we're, and removing some of these other requirements, we're not reducing down the size of the, what was previously a two-acre requirement. It's really a square footage requirement now for the minimum lot size, as well as the buildable area. But what it also does is not simply make the best farmland in Ashford as the most advantageous to build on. It allows other areas outside of flat, well-drained, again, agricultural areas to become the best building lots. It allows more flexibility in building without giving up some of the size requirements that we come to, we've come to enjoy in Ashford, and in a nice way, keep our distance between our neighbors.
Jeff, I would reemphasize that aspect of changing this in a way that makes it not focused on taking agricultural land and turn it into homeland, you know, lot sizes, and keep agriculture, agriculture. Because you can, as has been pointed out by numerous people that have testified before the commission, you can build on slope, ledge, whatever, and do it just fine as long as you meet all the requirements. You don't need to build on flat agricultural land to put your house up. So this is, I think, as we pointed out to the Ag Commission, a very friendly change for agriculture that we're making for them.
Thank you, Dick. And so, again, we've identified many of the general standards, consistent in both lot size and buildable area. We also came up with some consistencies between frontage and setback requirements, including single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling. The requirements for everything from home occupation, all the pieces that are in there for both permitted and specially permitted uses, with, again, more consistent levels of front, side, and rear setbacks. Also, the livable floor area requirements, one of the things that we discussed and removed had to do with, we still have the livable floor area, but we have, again, at the time, the previous regulations had us requiring a certificate of occupancy where that's really not our call, that's the building department's deal, so we've changed that. Heights of buildings remain the same. There is a definition in Number 5, excuse me, Number 5 under the general standards, Section 5, Number 5, which is in-law apartment requirements with the square footage and the sizes, the occupancy and such on that. Also, some, pretty much stayed the same, pretty much on interior lots, with their setbacks and such. No changes to firefighting water supplies, no changes to driveways. We did add the Section 9, which moved really the definitions, the long list of definition we had for home occupation and rural business into this section, along with requirements for the permitting of such items, including, I can't think, some more teeth for the zoning enforcement officer. Should there be any problems with those home occupations or rural businesses seeking a permit? It's not a permit for life, if you will. And then on the agriculture, again, most of that for Section 10 now, it used to be 9, Section 10, the farm stands and farm stores, seasonal agricultural signage, there was a bit of a change, and the temporary agriculturally related uses, just simply using the zoning enforcement officer as well as the commission to review any special circumstances or any special events looking to take place, not the zoning enforcement officer deems or warrants that maybe the commission should take a look at, depending on scope and scale. So in a nutshell, those are the changes. And again, I open it up first to our attendees to the meeting. If there's anyone there that has anything specific, either a question, a clarification, or a comment regarding the proposed changes to Article B, Residential Agricultural Zone, all right? 12, 13, again, I was told, give a count of 13. Okay, um, no comments there. Any comments from the commission on the Article 4B, all right? Okay, seeing as there are no comments there from the general public for the public hearing, and nothing more from the commission regarding input or sharing to the group, we will close the public hearing for the proposed revisions of Articles 3, 4, 5, and 6 of the Ashford zoning regulations, and move on to resuming the regular meeting. Okay, resuming the regular meeting. Unfinished business, we'll go to the discussion and final approval of proposed revisions to Articles 3, 4, 5, and 6. And this is where I'll specifically ask Doug to share what he had sent out to us in requesting and talking with Dick and the officers, as well as then any general comments or further comment from the commission regarding these. So Doug, you want to share your input?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. I'll start with the definitions. So I took some time, I went through both Article 3 and Article 4B, and checked it based on my personal review of where I thought we were going. And thank you, Dick, for all the work you've done. This is, this is where we were trying to get to. I do have two minor adjustments that I propose. The first one in the definitions section is associated with the definition for Connecticut grown. And based on the emails between Dick and myself, I'm recommending that it's the section that, of the Connecticut general statutes that it's highlighting, which is 22-6G as in grass, should be 22-38. And then at the very end, just note, comma, as amended, since this particular topic in the Connecticut statutes and public, Public Acts is constantly being modified, so the as amended will help us, should it change and our regulations don't change in real time. And then on the, oh, that's right. So then the second one in the definitions is the definition for the, for the term farm. It starts with a parcel of land. I recommend that we go back to the recommendation from the Agriculture Commission that says the term, and in parentheses, use the word farm, close parentheses, and then comma, and then continue on with what Dick has updated in the document. Relative to Article 4B, everything looks good from what I was looking at. I don't have any recommended changes. I think from a agriculture perspective, the wording associated with agricultural waste in permitted and special permit is sufficient. However, it's, it feels like the commission is being intentionally vague relative to what the commission is really trying to do, which is associate with waste power generation. So I'm not sure if we're still meeting the mark of what we're trying to accomplish, but the wording at the moment, from an agriculture perspective, doesn't seem to really cause any grief on the farmers in our town, from my perspective. I haven't vetted that statement with the Ag Commission, though. That is, that is all that I have to say at the moment, Jeff. Thank you.
Okay.
Jeff, if I can.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, Richard.
We're definitely better to refer to the statute rather than Public Acts or bills, because you can always pass a new bill that changes the statute. So, and I was in error, I cited the wrong statute. It should be 22-38, as Doug indicated. We'll make that change. As for the wording on farms, there's no problem with that. That can easily be changed. As for the special permit relative to agricultural waste, it really falls under the same thing we were doing in terms of someone trying to come into town and use waste, whether it be agricultural or commercial or whatever. It's like we were faced with up at Exit 72, where they were going to bring in all sorts of things to sort. They may or may not use it to do an anaerobic digester, but they could use it as a means of bringing waste into Ashford. By making a special permitted use, it gives us the ability to determine whether it's in the interest of Ashford to do it. So it doesn't impact the agricultural folks, but it does give the town the ability to stop someone from outside doing something that might be detrimental to the town. So I think we can handle that with the wording as such. So I would endorse making the changes to the farm definition, and also changing the statute to 2238. So I think we're in agreement there. And Doug did a good job going over a lot of the nitty-gritty details in what was put forth, and found a lot of little nits and picks that weren't caught by anyone else. So we put all those in place, and Doug, thank you for your efforts.
Excuse me, could you please repeat what you want the definition of farm to be? Because I've got farm, parentheses, in, I can't, I don't have it clear. So could you please explain your definition of farm?
Since it's your words, why don't you put them?
Well, Valerie, just, just the change we're going to seek for the definition of farm will be removing a part, removing the term "a parcel of land"
Okay.
and replacing the definition of farm, the term "farm" includes. Okay?
Okay.
All right, and Dick, I just have a question. One of the other recommendations or requests that Doug had made had to do with Connecticut grown and changing it to adding the term "as amended." Is there any issue with adding that?
No, because that's like, it's like a given. If you cite the statute, the statute is potentially open to be amended all the time. So it doesn't, it doesn't change it one way or the other. If we want to put it there, it's okay. If you look at the statutes, the statutes have a long list of amendments that go back for decades, and that's where the law is. The law is not in the Public Acts, the law is in the statutes. And all of the definitions we have cite statutes, not Public Acts.
Okay. Are you, are you good with that, Doug?
Yes, Jeff.
Okay, anyone else? Any comment on these items here that have been brought up? And any comments in general after this regarding the Article 4B, residential agricultural zone? Okay, though we've accepted our changes on all of these, we probably need a motion. Whoops, where'd I put all my papers? For, I'd like to try and capture this with all, in this case, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five motions for acceptance. So let's start with the Article 3 definitions. Do I have a motion to accept the proposed revisions to the land use regulations, Article 3 definitions, as presented on July 13, 2020?
Motion.
I'll second it. It's Janet.
That was Richard with the motion. That was Janet with a second. Mike, did you want something?
Yeah, I just, could you guys also just set an effective date so that we know when they will go into effect? I would, I would recommend at, at the, like, at the earliest, that they be effective upon publication, so that when I get the notice of decision run in the, in the paper, you can certainly push it back if you wanted to do like August 1st or something, but just so we have an effective date. Thanks.
Okay, as presented July 13, and with an effective date of, do you think we could have them put out by August 1 without killing ourselves?
What I can do, Jeff, is take the changes we've discussed, and then send those in a Word copy to Mike.
Okay, but for what he has to do in getting them presented, published, and then available for public consumption, August 1, Mike?
Yeah, so that'll give us two weeks to get a final draft available essentially for printing in the website, but at least that'll give me enough to go with a notice of decision.
Okay, we'd also like, we'd also like to put together new notebooks for all the members, too, I think.
Yeah, and Mike, I would encourage you to use a different font, Arial, for all the changes as they go into the book. That way we can see the change. I will send you a Word copy with all of the revisions shown, and I'll make all the changes we discussed tonight, and then you can accept the revisions. So what's published is the final copy, not the one with the revisions.
Yeah, one clean version, and I'll combine everything for one document so we can post it on the website.
Yep.
Okay, so again, our motion is to approve the proposed revisions to the land use regulations as presented on July 13, 2020, for, and be effective for publication, or be effective for August 1, 2020. And that is, so again, earlier, Valerie, just for your notes, we had Richard, motion.
I got it.
Okay, and we had Valerie second. All those in favor? Unmute and say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, unmute and say nay? And abstentions?
Abstention, all abstain.
Who's that?
Abstain.
Okay, so that was Nord abstaining, Jerry abstaining, and?
Jeff.
Jeff abstaining, Jeff Schillinger abstaining. Jeff abstaining. Jeff Schillinger abstaining. Thank you.
And you, can you seat Doug to be able to vote on this as an alternate? The others have to abstain or not?
Since Catherine left, he can, should be-
Oh, I didn't know Catherine had left.
Yes.
Oh.
She signed up.
I thought that was her number down here. Okay, so, all right. So we will seat Doug for the vote. He's been at all the public hearings. Doug, we'd like you to vote on this subject.
Oh, you want my answer now?
Yea, nay, or abstain?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a yea. All right, so that was Valerie, that was Doug, Jenny being seated for Catherine Sampson, who left at some point between now and the last 15 minutes. Alex will give you a time.
7:33.
Thank you.
I mean, that's the time now.
Oh, 53.
7:53 now.
Oh, 53, right.
Okay. All right, so, motion for that carries. Like a motion for the acceptance and approval of the proposed revisions to the Land Use Regulations of Article 4B Residential Agricultural Zone. Richard, motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's that? Oh, Mr.-
Jerry.
Okay.
Oh.
I can't second it.
Well, we're not, though we're not in the public hearing, can't he, well, he left staying from his vote, right?
Correct.
But he can't, can he or can he not motion? Janet, you were thinking he can't?
I don't know. I'm just questioning it.
I, I don't think so.
He's a seated member. I mean, he can always-
He's not an alternate.
He can, I would think he could motion to accept, but he just can't vote on it.
Okay, then, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So Jerry, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain. Nord Jacoboff.
Jerry abstain.
Jerry.
And I abstain as well. Jeff Schillinger.
All right.
And for point of clarification, the version of 4B that I sent out before this meeting would be the one that we'll send out as the approved version.
Right, there were no changes to that.
Did we, Jeff, did it, Doug?
Yep.
Did we set an effective date on the last motion?
It should be, I'm sorry, thank you, the wording should be very similar. We'll make sure it's similar, but the effective date would be August 1 as presented for July 13, 2020, and effective for August 1, 2020. Just to be a nuget and complete here, find my other documents. Come on, here we go. Okay. Looking for the motion for the proposed revision to the Land Use Regulation, Article 5A, Section 4, Administrative Action, as previously discussed. No changes to it, as presented July 13, 2020, and effective August 1, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Richard, a second?
I'll second. Alex?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain. Nord Jacoboff.
Nord, Jerry.
Jeff.
And Jeff. Thank you. Are you okay, Valerie? Can I move on to the next one? You want me to wait?
No, I've got it.
Okay. Looking for a motion for the proposed revision to the Land Use Regulation for Article 5F fees. Again, just to remind everyone, this is the large-scale application, and again, someone committing with a large project, and it requires some expertise beyond the town that they foot the bill with an escrow account and put money away so that we can draw off of it, and it doesn't cost the town to get expert and professional consulting fees. So again, proposed revision to Land Use Regulation, Article 5F fees as presented on July 13, 2000, actually, it should have been the last time, but we'll go with, we went over it this time also, July 13, 2020, and effective for August 1, 2020.
Motion.
Richard?
Second.
Second by Alex. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain. Nord Jacoboff.
Nord.
Jerry abstain.
Jeff.
Jerry and Jeff. Thank you. And last but not least, looking for a motion for the proposed revision to Land Use Regulation, Article 6E, Section 2, exemptions. And this is our excavation and filling permit with the input from the Ag Commission, to remind everyone, replacing the current language of 6E, Section 2. So proposed revision of Land Use Regulation, Article 5A, Section 2 exemptions as presented July 13, 2020, and effective August 1, 2020.
Motion.
Richard, motions. Janet, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain. Nord Jacoboff.
Abstain. Jerry.
Jerry.
Abstain. Jeff.
And Jeff.
Could I ask a question?
Sure, Valerie, go ahead.
It was Article 6E, Section 2 exemptions. Is that not right?
That's correct.
Hi, Jeff?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Hi, this is Jasmine from Henrietta House Bed and Breakfast.
Yeah, hello, Jasmine.
Hi, I'm standing in for Marion, and I've never done a Zoom meeting before, so bear with me. I missed the time to bring up a comment on bed and breakfast. I think it was like in a 4B or 4A section. So can I bring up my question now, or should I wait later?
I would bring up your question now. We'll open that up to you since we're obviously dealing with Zoom, and the normal protocol is, you know, we try and go as best we can, but we want to hear all voices, so please go right ahead.
So I don't know exactly where it is, but it says that bed and breakfast can only serve to overnight guests. And I'm just curious why, I mean, we've held like small tea parties and other situations, and I'm curious why all other kind of events are excluded, even if it could be just two or three people, because it would be the same amount, I guess, of risk. I just didn't know why it was excluded just to overnight guests.
What is your last name, please?
So there was, there was no change in that ruling, or in that regulation. Originally, it said, under definitions, a bed and breakfast in may include provision of meals for overnight guests only. And we moved that part from the definitions into the regulations. And I believe it's, and maybe Mike can give us more insight, but I believe it's because we don't want a bed and breakfast to turn into a restaurant at a, in a residential neighborhood.
Okay, well, I just know our capacity, and we've done it on such a small scale, such, you know, for the senior center and parents of kids who have volunteered here. It would never turn into that type of scale, and if anyone has ever visited our property would know that's not a possibility. But it's just, it's an offer, and I think we're in that time where community is extremely vital. And to, Marion told me, and if I'm correct, that these rules and regulations would stay for the years to come. I can understand, like, not having anybody come for maybe a couple of months, but this is something that we've been doing for five years, and I, I don't understand why it would forever be changed now.
Couple of questions, Jasmine. These events that you have, are there charges associated with those?
Yes, but nothing more than $20 a person, and we've never had more than five people at a time. And it has, like, nine times out of 10, been on a volunteer basis with the senior center, for example. We talked to them, and they were the ones who proposed the amount.
So is this at your bed and breakfast, or is this at the senior center?
No, this is at the bed and breakfast. It was just an event for these folks to kind of get out.
Well, as Janet had said, that this was an existing regulation.
I thought she said it was a definition that got turned into a regulation. Was I wrong?
Well, no, you're right, except the definition, the definition would regulate what you can do as well. We just moved the wording to a different place.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And I, you know, it's, I think it's hard to, it's hard to wait, it's hard to balance the rights of residential neighbors with people who want to run a legitimate business, and-
And you think we're threatening that?
Well, it's, we have to think of everyone. I mean, I could open up a bed and breakfast in my house and have, you know, people in every night or every day for lunch, and my neighbors wouldn't like it, so I'm not quite sure how to, what, how to balance the needs of everyone.
Okay.
Obviously, it sets a precedent for what we're trying to avoid, as Janet explained earlier, of someone opening up a restaurant or working under the auspices of a bed and breakfast and, for all intents and purposes, acting like a restaurant.
Okay, well, I disagree with that, but I don't want to continue to, like, override this meeting. Is there another time, or can I write an email to someone to disclose this in more detail?
Yeah, absolutely. You can send an email to the P&amp;Z. What's our email address, Alex?
PZZ?
PZC, C as in car.
Oh, okay. At ashfordtownhall.org.
Yes, okay.
You know, I could just give one example. When, before Marion opened her bed and breakfast, she, people helped her do things, and she invited about five people to her house for a breakfast, you know? And we just sat around the table. I mean-
Yeah, it's the exact-
I think that's probably the type of thing that Jasmine is talking about. I mean, we didn't pay anything, but she just was trying to thank us for helping her.
That, that would not constitute the situation we're talking about.
All right.
Something like that, obviously of a volunteer nature or a benefit to, you know, senior center, a thank you, or, you know, even a private event, obviously.
But as soon as I make, like, $10, then we have an issue. I get it. Okay.
Well, no, it isn't, it isn't so much the cost as it is, again, the precedent that it sets. But yeah, please send us your email, so we could potentially get further discussion to this.
Yeah, I'm going to talk with Marion, and so we can get the details and, you know, everything in order. But I appreciate, thank you for letting me interrupt, and yeah, I look forward to chat.
Jeff, there's a lot of functions in town that end up serving food. For instance, the family day, which we're not having this year. The concerts in the park serve food, so, and they charge for it. So I'm not sure where, what Marion would be doing would be much different from those. So we can talk about whether this is something that needs to be regulated specifically. Doesn't sound like it's something that we would want to prohibit. Just make sure that we don't step on our toes in what we're doing, you know, to stop her from doing what she's been doing, you know, for years.
Well, let's, as I said, let's receive the email from Marion and Jasmine, and we'll open this up for other discussion, because again, we're not necessarily changing the current regulation on that. We're continuing it on, but with this input, it's something for us to look at.
Yeah.
Great. Well, I gotta go put the goats in, because it's getting dark, so I'm gonna-
Thank you, Jasmine.
And thank you for letting me join. Cheers. Bye.
Thank you.
Bringing up one other item, because we're not totally done with everything that we're doing for this next iteration. Mike and I have been going back and forth on the zoning map. We need to-
Richard, that's an entirely different thing that's not on the agenda right now, and no one's made a motion to put that on. So, I mean, if we want to bring it up for the next meeting, or if someone wants to make a motion to have that discussion, obviously, but that's currently not on the agenda for a discussion. We just can't open it up to any old thing opening us up as we go through this, but-
Okay, we'd like to make a motion to put it on the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Janet. Valerie, I'll second it.
Okay.
And again, Valerie, this is a motion to have, add the zoning map discussion on the zoning map.
Okay.
Janet, seconds. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? You guys can vote on this, it's okay. So moved. Okay, so we've added discussion on zoning map. Okay. Richard, you have something you want to say about this?
Yeah, basically, we've been going around on this. Mike and I have traded emails back and forth as we go forth with changes to the regulations. Having an updated zoning map is important. I would say that what we'd like to do is, Mike, if you can take whatever I've sent you and turn it into a physical zoning map, we as a commission can then comment on it and try to get it out with the same things that we're doing on the other changes to the regulations.
Yeah, so I can try to pull together what we have. There's sort of two different ways to go about this. If we're thinking that after evaluating the zoning map that is currently in the zoning regs, which is marked "draft," is not current and doesn't reflect what was done previously, then we need to, and what we want to do is fix it, that's, that's one thing. If we think that there are changes that need to be made that weren't made previously, and we want to go start talking about zone changes, that's a sort of different process that takes a lot more time, because it's, we've got to do referrals, and, you know, we've got to go through that whole process, almost like a text. So I think what you're suggesting is the-
Also, doesn't it? Doesn't that require hearings and such also for your zoning?
Yeah, it's basically all of what we've just done, but if, but if there's changes that- that were made when you did the last revision that never, that never made it onto the map, and we can, we can fix it to make sure that it's correct. I mean, the map now says draft on it, which is not good either.
Right.
So, yeah, we can mark it up and get there, but we just have to figure out which way we're going. So I know what we need to do from a regulatory perspective.
If we go back to our infamous meeting with NICOG, where we agreed to what we wanted to do, and I produced a handwritten document that said, do A, B, C, D. I've, I've sent that to Mike. Mike is not as familiar with the landmarks in Ashford as Jeff or Alex, or I might be. I tried to clarify that a bit and have sent some things back to him. What we need to do is, is implement basically what we talked about months ago and then get it on a draft proposal for a zoning map. And this, you know, involved basically, you know, putting, you know, commercial zoning on 74 and 44, etc., and, and just getting that out so everyone can look at it. It, it's the same thing we've talked about quite a few times. It's just a case of getting it into a formal document that we then put forward. I don't think anyone has disagreed.
What we're going to see, though, is, you know, some of the things that Mike was just bringing up, is that if we make zoned areas for those areas that are listed as commercial now, if we change any of those, those are going to require hearings and such like that.
Correct.
If we continue with the spot zoning that we've been doing and just maintain those grandfathered commercial areas in there, then that would not be a change and that would simply require us to approve the document and start using a non-draft document with this information in.
In, in essence, I don't think anyone's really approved the spot zoning. And I don't agree with NICOG on a lot of things. But NICOG basically said, spot zoning is not legal. You need to zone in zones. And not having a zoning map is a, is a weakness in, in our overall land use regulations.
Absolutely. I, I agree that, you know, we need to have this done. It needs to stop saying draft. It needs to be something we can reference and use, public can reference and use and such. I, as for spot zoning being illegal, I, I, I think it was either ugly or not neat, is how it was described to me, not so much not legal. Because I think a number of towns, and Alex and I think have had some discussion on this, such as Ellington and others that have some things creeping up and where they've got businesses in the middle of residential areas. And
I think that.
Just the nature of the towns.
You're both right in that, in that there are a lot of towns that have zoning maps that have, that have parcels that don't match the neighboring parcels where you have a commercial gas station that's along a state road or something that's in the middle of homes. But, so those historic spot zoning issues are, are fine. Where, where the courts get uncomfortable is when someone comes in and says, well, I have a farm and I want to do something, so I'm going to change it to commercial. So adjusting a parcel on a one-time basis or something is where they don't like it. So historically, having a commercial spot zone, because that's the way the property's always been, is fine, because you want to keep those property owners' rights intact. But a new zone change to create a new spot zone is where people get a little more uneasy.
Well, again, even though if someone were to come to us and wanted, if someone were to come to us and wanted to change the zoning, then obviously that would require the hearing and the permitting and all of that stuff on our part and approval. If it's us looking to change the zoning of somewhere, you know, I don't know, I don't necessarily what legality is, tax issues and things like this, where, you know, what our responsibilities are for something like that.
More or less, you'd really, you really would have to refrain from changing the zone of one parcel unless you were going to match it with an adjacent zone. That's sort of, so if you said, you know, we want to adjust the boundary here and this is, this neighbor's a residential and commercial, and it really is more appropriate to go from one to the next, that's fine. But if you have something that sits in the rural agricultural zone, you want to drop a commercial zone on it, that would not be good.
So you can, you can expand the commercial zone.
Yes.
Like an amoeba, so to speak.
Yes.
Engulfing something else that is commercial also, but what you don't want to do is have a commercial, currently a residential and a commercial on the other side, and try and make that whole strip commercial.
Right, because the goal is to make sure that the, the use of property in the zoning regulations, look at what's in, you know, in harmony with the neighboring area. And if you have all a bunch of commercial and then you drop a house in the middle and you go back to commercial, that, that character and that, that harmony, it, it doesn't, doesn't fly. So, yeah, we, so we can look at that. I, I have some thoughts as far as potential other things we might want to do with the zoning map. So perhaps this is a good, as good of a time as ever to start looking at that.
Yeah, oh no, absolutely.
So, so maybe to sort of circle back with this, we'll try to pull together for the next meeting, a map of what we think reflects where we are and where the commission thought about going. And we can use that as a foundation for the discussion.
Perfect.
I would echo that. Mike, if you need anything more from me, I think I've sent you several items that reflect meetings that Jeff, Alex and I had with NICOG.
Yeah.
And, and I can further clarify those. The key thing is, I tried working with the PDF copy you sent me, and I could not figure out a way to easily dot the things. So if you can use your mapping function to put something together that you think reflects what we've talked about, then we've got something to talk about. And it can, and start modifying it from there. And I think, I think it's important that we get this out with this next round of changes to the land use regulations.
Well, that will be tough, I think, because we're not meeting before we get these out. This is what you're talking about? Or you're talking about other regulations?
Well, this is a weakness that we have, because we don't have a zoning map. So the sooner we can get this behind us, the better off we're going to be.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, but I don't think killing ourselves or killing Mike to get this out before two, two weeks earlier than our next meeting is going to take place.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, you guys, at some point, you have, you guys adopted a zoning map. So whatever last map was officially adopted, however long ago it was, is the map that's in place. The, the draft map, you know, is not effective essentially. But because these revisions don't, don't propose any adjustments to the zone boundaries, these two things, while they're tied together in that they should be hand in hand, because these changes don't make changes to the boundaries of the zones, I think we can do them separately.
And I, and I think if we end up with any type of changes to our zoning for a commercial or whatever, obviously, it's going to require hearings and things like this.
Yeah.
But I think giving Mike the time to put this together, give us an opportunity to review it. Mike, is it possible to get it to Alex to have it sent out so that we can review and then come with our questions and things like that ahead of time?
Yeah, I'm mulling around the best way to get it out so that we can actually get comments from you guys. So I'm going to look into that a little bit. But the way that the, the old stuff that's in the regs is written. It says, you know, 1,200 feet from the center line of such road west and 1,000 feet from this intersection, you know? So it's very hard to scale that on a, you know? So not only is it a bad way to do zoning, because, you know, you have properties that are in two zones, so we, we got to fix that. It's just, it's very hard to, to scale that on a townwide map that we can then turn into something I can email. So let me figure out the best way to do that, whether it be we chunk the town so that you get a section to review, you know, maybe in four quadrants or something, so we can see the parcels at that, at a real scale. So let me, let me come up with something and we'll get it out as soon as possible.
And take, take all the time you need. You got 29 days.
And Mike, I would recommend that you reach out to Michael Gardner, because he's the one that wrote all that stuff. And he can probably explain where those places are. I, I sat down with Google Maps, with parcel lines, and I, I could not figure out where to put all those parcels. And I finally gave up on it.
Well, the good news is if that becomes too complicated, it's not worth spending the commission's time. We should just move forward to what they think is appropriate and treat it as a zone change and adopt a map that everybody's comfortable with.
Yeah, so let's have that discussion when we have something in hand. Thank you.
And I would say work with the document that Alex, Jeff and I generated as a meeting with NICOG. And, and that, that gives broad swaths of areas that we're talking about as opposed to parcels.
Yep, I have that.
Okay. Another discussion on the zoning map for now. Thank you. Thank you, Richard, for bringing that up. Probably should have put this on a new business, but any other new business to discuss? And Michael, any report from the zoning officer?
Um, the only thing I guess I'd say is we're, things are starting to sort of get back to normalcy with activity. I think we're seeing, I'm seeing, getting a lot of calls and complaints and permit questions and other things. So trying to do that, we're sort of unexpectedly down some staff. So things have been a little bit crazy. But the other thing that I'm going to do is, we've got a couple of different application forms that are currently in place for commission and for this type and for that type and fees and, and everything is sort of all over the place. So I'm, now that we have all this stuff fixed in the administrative section, ready to go, I'm going to create a, a single planning and zoning application form that'll be fillable so we can get it on the website, because right now with Town Hall closed. So I'm just trying to simplify the process so that people can, can kind of not have to worry about which form has which and who goes to what and just trying to work with that. I'm still trying to speak with the town's permit link vendor to talk about how we might be able to get this application, zoning applications online so they can be submitted and reviewed remotely, so that people can do that, just like they would a building permit. So stay tuned on that. And I, I think you are all aware that all of the town's recorded videos are being posted on the town's YouTube page. So anybody can go and watch these after the fact, whether it be planning and zoning, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. So all of these get posted there. If people are interested in hearing what was said or, or don't remember what the discussion was, if you don't want to look at the minutes, you want to hear exactly, you can go there.
Hey, Mike, I have a question.
Didn't know we had a YouTube page. Go ahead, Dart.
We sure do.
Has Jim Rupert, the building inspector, returned to work yet?
So I, I understand Jim is back to work. He, 99% of the, the activity in Ashford is handled by Randy Heckman, who's the assistant building official. So he does most of the stuff. They do tag team. But most of what we deal with is, is with Randy. But yes, I believe Jim is back in Bolton.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Michael?
Nothing that I can think of at the moment.
Okay.
And any word about when the Town Hall might open up?
So there are plexiglass windows that have been added to the front of the building and underneath the overhang. So we can meet with people from opposite sides of a window, like a bank teller. I don't know when the official sort of, we're open, let's, let's go for it type scenario. I don't know what Ralph is evaluating. But we, we've been conducting as needed business, basically out on the sidewalk, to review plans and things with people. So I'm, I'm not sure. I think they're kind of waiting to see what some of the executive orders do to expire in September, you know, kind of what that looks like, to see if there's new guidance, because a lot of the executive orders that are in place will expire. So they might be waiting for some guidance on that, but I'm not sure.
And we do know a lot of the plexiglass went up, especially for the tax bills and things going out that are, you know, come due August or if pushed off or whatever. So we at least know it's, guys, Michael addressed, it's going to go through August, likely into September, before there's any change on that. Okay. Um, Michael, thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn? I want to thank everyone for their attendance and their attention. I also want to thank those people who worked on the short-term rental, the special task force working with Dick Williams and coming up with the changes to the regs. It's been a long, long road, but it's come to fruition. And again, I really appreciate all your efforts and all the efforts of the entire council, commission.
And I'd like to reiterate that it has been a long road. I'm glad to see us unanimous in our acceptance of things. And I think we've made a lot of good progress. A lot of folks have worked together on this. Jeff, I appreciate your acknowledging, but it, it has not been just me. It's been a lot of, of the whole commission that have worked on this. So it's, it's gratifying to see it finally come to a close.
I want to, I want to add one point of clarification, just so everybody understands why this has been a fire drill. So we have a grant that the town has applied for and received through the town clerk's office a while back, which allows the town to essentially go through the codification process and get the, all of the ordinances and everything that's regulatory based online in a really easy to, to understand format. So, so people have access to the regulations, whether it be a charter, whether it be an ordinance, whatever. So the regulations that we've just adopted will become part of that. Once I get the final copy from Dick and we're all comfortable that it matches what we said it would, I will then provide it to General Code per the contract that the town has. And they will go through a review on their end. They will evaluate this, and not like Ken Slater would, but still perform a little bit of a regulatory review. And if there's something that we've adopted that is, that is, that goes against language that we have elsewhere or creates some type of problem, they'll give us that feedback. So while I don't think anything that we've done, you know, I have no concerns with any of it, if we have a, something somewhere else in town that says X and we've said Y, they're going to say, hey, listen, guys, you sort of need to figure this out. So that's why we're doing that, so we can have the benefit of their review as well. So if something comes up, I'll let you know. But if not, it'll become, it'll be, get codified with everything else as we move to the ball.
Mike, you bring up a point. We talked about this and we passed it some time ago, but the language for the fee ordinance, which is in the regulations, is also an ordinance. And we had a, the language for the ordinance that was approved by the commission and submitted. So that should be going forward to the town clerk also. Jeff, you recall several months ago, we talked about this?
Yes.
So, Mike, make sure that that's out there, too.
All right. Thank you all. Again, looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Janet, Janet, motions seconded by Alex. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you for your time. Valerie, thank you. If you have any questions, you know who to call.